I am now. You're good to go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is March 27th. And we are here seven o'clock, it's almost after seven o'clock, and we're going to have our joint meeting between the Select Board and the Advisory Committee, as stated in the charter. This meeting is going to be both live and then people are going to be zooming in as well. If you'd like to zoom in, I will give you the phone number. It is 1-646-931-3860. And the meeting number is 851-241-0179. Enter the code 355297. If you'd like to zoom in the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have an acceptance of the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second one is Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Ms. Cantfield is here remotely, so we'll be doing roll call votes for everything.
Mr. Vinyani?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Cantfield?
Aye.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I made the motion two seconds ago. I'm sorry, I was a little slow on that.
Motion second.
Motion second.
Second by the board.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I'd like to read this statement. The Cituwe Select Board and Advisory Board encourage an environment of respect during meetings. And we encourage all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community. And we want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We urge our committee members and all participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community and to participate in an orderly and peaceful manner. That being said, before we jump to the meeting, I do just want to recognize the great service. As many of you know, we had a devastating fire this past, over the last couple of days, this weekend down in Minna Beach. And I just want to thank all the firefighters, all the police force, all the communities that jumped in and helped us to really keep that thing under control. It was devastating and huge. We saw pictures that just looked so dangerous and so, so really devastating. And we're just very thankful that no one got injured and that there were no casualties or any injuries from it at all. There was destruction, I think it was five or six homes. I don't think mine had blown up the same again as it did there. But again, just want to thank all the firefighters and everybody who was there to really keep it under control and make sure that, you know, that no one really got injured. Thank you for everybody. Jim, anyone else I should thank? I know there were about six supporting communities that came in and helped as well.
Actually, there were nine or 10 supporting communities that came in. So we'll be getting a list of all those on Sunday night. We'll have you sign and hacky that. Really a fantastic job. I was in late Friday night. I had several of the area chiefs tell me it was an outstanding job. First, no Cituwe team that got there did provide an after spray. So it could have been a lot worse. The fact that none of the residents got hurt and none of the first responders got hurt is really amazing. So a fantastic job by everybody involved.
Any other comments?
I would just like to add, you know, additionally, my gratitude is the community support that, you know, Andrew also mentioned this morning, this stands as a community Christmas, really taking care of the residents right away. And they'll take care of the first responders too with giving us some support as well. So they're a great asset to our community.
And I would also add, you know, the even Cituwe partner, I know they put some people up there. They're always very generous and can help the community out in emergency situations. Thank you, everybody else. If you missed anybody, you know who you are. Thank you very much. That being said, Jim, you want to turn it over to you and you can, you can give your review.
Sure. Here's what we have in the forum. So good evening, everybody. I'd like to open the meeting at 7:06. And I need a motion to approve the agenda as written. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Can you call the roll?
Ms. Naidell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. McWigan?
Aye.
I think that's all she knows.
Elise?
Oh, sorry. Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Patricia, oh, Patricia Landt. Okay, is that?
Okay, so we have, we have, they also now have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting as written, submitted.
So moved.
In second?
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you. And can you call the roll, Jerry? Thorough, again.
I'll answer to one of you calling tonight. Ms. Naidell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. McWigan?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we are ordered and I'll turn it back to you if you'd like to.
Sure, I'll get the rest of the review. Yeah, I think what we'll do first is, you know, this, this is a pre-annual town meeting get-together where we discuss, both of us, both groups have done a ton of analysis, been sat in the same amount of meetings, asked probably the same amount of questions about the budgets. And this is the forum that we have to discuss anything that we want to go in further. If there's any discrepancies, we can talk about that here. And, and really just allows us to, as kind of the two main branches of the government, to discuss what we're going to be doing at the town meeting. Before we do that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Jim. He'll give a quick summary of the financial recap of where we are as we go into town meeting. And then we'll start looking at the articles.
Sure, thank you. This is a presentation that I've done previously. It's been updated for all the new numbers that changed that we had in the budget. So I'll go through it fairly quickly. FY '22 recap, we've been through that before. We had a very good year in FY '22. A lot of that was driven by our new growth. As it says, the major developments that are driving that growth, Toll Brothers, Oceanside, Cituwe, the Drew Project at Green Bush, Stockbridge Road 40B and the 40B and Route 380 Sanctuary at Cituwe are all winding down at this point. We do not have any projects of that magnitude pending for the planning board at this point that will replace those. Also, given what the Fed's doing, if we did have a project, I can see that project being pushed off. It would cost to borrow money to get that done. So we had a very good year this year. We were still not planning on that growth going forward. Next slide, please. The new growth, when you start the budget, that extra new growth starts with your base number and adds into your basement. It's starting to the next year. We have brought our local receipts up. We have made a lot of movement on our foreshow. We'll continue on that. The board has approved. We're getting ready to get started on the Oceanside Seawall. Seawall for Cedar Point, that was one of the projects that we put in for direct federal funding from our legislative delegation along with the water treatment plant, Comrak Water Mains and some work on the sewer treatment plants we put on. But we continue to get reimbursements. We're doing all of those and those projects are moving forward. Next one, please, Seth. Are you doing it, Nancy?
It's Seth.
Seth, okay. Revenue assumptions for fiscal '24, which is what we're talking about. Property taxes by two and a half, new growth at 1.2. A big number since we had our first set of discussion was the governor's budget with an additional 300, 1,000. We've increased local receipts slightly. Room occupancy taxes, the first time we've used that. We have two years of revenue on local occupancy tax, so we did put a number in for that. In fact, that is, the meals tax remains at 230,000. Again, our two big drivers of local receipts are new growth, which I just discussed, and motor vehicle excise. I think we might see some of the same pressures on motor vehicle excise, given it went from 1.9% to financial cut to 7 to 8% to financial cut. So that may slow that down. Your major revenue source, the biggest revenue source we have obviously is our tax levy. State aid and the enterprise accounts coming next in local receipts. So the vast majority of your revenue comes from the property tax levy. Next one, Seth. Just to break down the tax bills, the average tax bill, you can see where there's jumps. That's generally where the tax is on the overhead. Next one, Seth, please. Just to break down of how the money goes, where it goes, how it's broken down. Each of those categories is by your budget and then the employee benefits, as you can see, is all in one. When we do our reconciliation with the state at the end of the year, and we do net school spending and those things, those costs are then attributed back to their actual departments. So, but this is the actual dollar amount of the budget that is spent on those departments. As we talked about our local receipts, we are still conservative in our local receipt estimates. We will continue to be conservative in those estimates. Right now, you know, we're kind of in between inflationary period and a potential recession, so we are keeping those on the conservative side. The budget is designed to finish in the black and to provide the free cash that we use for our capital within the parameters set by the Department of Revenue, which is 3% to 5% of your budget should come back as free cash by the end of the year. Next slide, please. We continue to see costs increasing in all our endeavors, water, sewer, anything that requires destruction, anything that requires pipes or pumps or anything along those lines are going up. It seems almost exponentially. Our assessments are going up. We do want to thank Pam Avettabli, again, our treasurer. Pension was originally scheduled about 14-plus percent, and her leadership with the Treasurer Collectors Association, they did a smoothing. So we went down a little bit this year and next year will be a little higher than normal, but it really helped us create up almost $300,000 for this year's budget. So thank you to her. We do spend a lot of time on foreshow, grants, or things like that. So we're going to continue having a balance to leave for resident services with what is very limited revenue source, especially when it's increasing. Your budget, as always, I call it a clean budget. It does not require free cash. It does not use stabilization. It only uses recurring revenues. We did increase our local receipts slightly. We used the governor's budget as our base for local aid that 20-something years I've been doing, I think only twice has the governor's budget been higher than the legislative budget. And that's just because the economy was in such a state of freefall those two times. So that's always a very good number to use as your base. This contract and the laborers contract, DPW, are currently being negotiated. There are some funds in the budget for that, depending on when those come out. We have excess funds if you find more. There are two new positions in the general fund budget, actually more than one and a half. A second school resource officer that we share between the schools and the town. And then a land use, land enforcement position that the board had added. That'll be a part-time position. That is in the building department. And then there are three new positions. The golf enterprise does a transition from going from a outside contractor to manage the, keep the maintenance of the golf course to bringing that back in house, as Ian discussed with him when he was in. Congratulations to Ian. His wife had their baby, so congratulations to him. I know he's not watching, but if he does, congratulations. Good luck to Ian and his wife. And then one new position, the transfer station, to help with the water at the transfer station and to cut down some of the overtime that we're seeing down there, having to bring people in actually from outside the office. We have people out at the transfer station. Next slide, please. This is just your fixed costs. We've been through these quite a bit. I won't linger on those. That service down a little bit. Regional school assessment up significantly, and that is because we're setting a law that will set it. 10 more, Nancy, is 10 additional schools this year. And we'll be going to the MoTech, and that's the vast majority of that. Really, the highlights of the budget is we are continuing to support the services the residents want. We are balancing those needs with what has to get done. And I think the board is meeting the goals of providing what they need to provide and what they wish to provide to the residents. We continue to make the water and sewer infrastructure upgrades. We'll make some big strides this year with the water treatment plant. As you've seen in my updates, we're now out there. We're going to do some digging, some test pits, some soil analysis, so we can get the stormwater and those things done. But we'll see some big movement this year on the water and sewer infrastructure, typically the water. So we continue to aggressively pursue grants. And as I said, we've applied for four different projects through our federal delegation, potential direct appropriation from the Congress, with our number one priority, of course, is still water treatment. Capital budget, you can link to the capital budget on the town website. This is the first year that we use the click of for the capital budget. I think it was a pretty good process. Parkmains are still getting used to it, but they can upload pictures. They can upload all the things they need to upload. It continues, excuse me, to be an aggressive capital budget based upon our free cash. The capital budget committee did not recommend two of my projects, the MS4 stormwater and a single pickup truck for the DPW. The board has left unapproved both of those, plus an additional $1 million for water main work. And this is the Jericho Road project, the gas company digging up Jericho Road. Kevin wanted to get the water main done at the same time, and then we paid that route completely, so we added that. I would note that the advisory board also supported the capital budget estimated with those two projects and the additional money for the water mains. The water mains are the only borrowing in the entire capital project. There is no other borrowing of the capital this year because we are kind of tight with our borrowing. We will have some flexibility in 2025, I believe, Nancy. We have some debt that comes off of right now. We did not want to issue any other debt under the levy until we get some relief. This is your five-year capital plan. See, the big number is obviously education, $91 million. That's assuming a new school of $85 million. That's a process. Whether that number's going to come out, we don't know at this point, but right now it's longer than $85 million. Of course, your water and your sewer departments, it's still a big number going forward. Next one, Seth. Recurring your capital, sewer and water departments are leading the way. Education is $1,007,000. That's the next big one. But again, theirs is going to be over the next couple of years, if and when we get to that in school. Next one, Seth. Just to break down, it's a $22 million total capital plan. Really, it's just about everything that we, we do. Majority free cash, all through the enterprise funds. And then again, one borrowing for the water enterprise, and that's in the water lines. Otherwise, it is all cash or some, some area. Next one, Seth. We'll continue to stress the board's priorities of water and sewer. We have made some progress in the regional sewer. We're hoping to continue that. We apply for special additional money for that from the state, keep moving that forward. Pension costs and insurance will continue to increase. We have a bad year insurance-wise. I think that'll even out the next couple of years. 2028 is, you had about pension obligation?
Aye.
2029, sorry. We'll, we'll have to pay off our pension obligations, so that'll take a big decline at that point. At which point, we'll probably be putting most of that into our OPEB, but we will get a lot of relief. Right now, we are on schedule for 2029 for our pensions, so that would be a good thing. Next one, please. That's it. Everyone spent a whole lot of time. Most of this have already covered. The board's well aware. I know the advisory board is well aware. So it's generally time for questions to take a while of your time off if we talk.
Great. I'll open up to the Select Board first, then go over to Jane. Any questions for Jim regarding the budget process or the budget or the presentation you just did? Karen Cantfield, anything?
One question. Jim, you said that the board has, has indicated a preference to allocate resources towards enforcement? And, and you recommend, this is new to me anyway, that it's recommended as a position. Is that possible that that work can be accomplished through a contractor?
It can be. Right now, the money is in part-time salaries in the building department because we need a place to actually put the funds, and we can move those as we go forward and make the determination how we want to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I just want to point out that I'm very happy to see the facilities improvement plan continually to be worked on. I think it's one of the things that we've had a problem with in the past, so I think the citizens should be happy to see that number of what it is.
Yeah, I mean, town meeting directed us to come up with facilities plan. We went and did this. And this is a way for us to basically report back to them that we have the plan. We've done the plan. Here you can see we're reading the plan on an annual basis. The important thing is if it's in there in the capital, it can't be spent on something else. Like, it could be if it was on a budget. So it makes sure that that money goes for those things that it's supposed to go. So we're committed to that, and we're going to try to make it through that.
Glad to see the plan that was made and not put on a shelf, implemented. So thank you.
In the feasibility room?
In the feasibility room.
What's the name of that?
No. Jim, you can probably articulate this a little better than I can, but could you speak a little bit to some of the great work that Pam and Nancy have done in this this kind of hydrostrates and using over cash and how we're being good stewards with people's money, especially going forward, maybe get that settled. An excellent job. I know you can kind of think of that there.
It's really a juggling act because under the statute, our first item is secure. Right? So we're security liquidity return as opposed to a private business, which might be returned first. So it really is a balancing act to look at when your revenues come in, when you're going to be spending money, and then what can you take and put over here to do a high-yield, multi-month investment, CD or a treasury bill. So I know Nancy and Pam spend a lot of time sitting down, looking ahead, trying to see. We won't put a lot of money away in June because we spent a lot of money in July because we pay up our insurance upfront, we pay up pensions upfront. But then after that, there's no town meeting until November, so you can kind of say, okay, we have this money. We can now invest it. They spent a lot of time doing that. I know Pam spends a lot of time. This is why we put shopping bags to see what she gets for interest rates, to see who wants our money. So they weren't very hot, but at the same time, they're first priority on security, so it's kind of like balancing act. But they do a real good job.
Now, I just want to say thank you. I wasn't at the meeting, so I was out of town. Very well discussed the additional, we're to allocate the additional funds that we got from the governor. So I just want to say thank you to Jim and Nancy, and also all of you who are thinking of what to accomplish that with. The resource officer is actually going to be shared, correct, to kind of cover some of that summertime shift that we need to cover for request from Chief Thompson. And then, secondly, you know, just seeing that enforcement, as Karen mentioned, added, I think is going to really help that those departments. Now, I know we don't always love to throw people on the problem, but I think that's really what we need there. So I just want to say thank you.
Great, and I'll just add a few quick things. You know, the whole budget process, which Jim mentioned a second ago, is, is kind of different than, than normal business practices because it is a conservative budget. And it isn't supposed to, you know, it's that fine line between how much money you spend. And I mean, I've been on the financial forecast meeting for all, and so has Ms. Andrew, and I know both of you have been to the meetings. You know, how much money do you spend and take from different things? And if you look at the charts, you'll see that there's more cash there. But the goal is really not to run into an emergency situation. And we know that any dollar that we don't spend, we can spend on capital items that we really, frankly, 10 years ago weren't able to afford. So the system works great. I want to thank everybody that participated in it. I want to thank Jim for, for your organization and Nancy for all the work you've been doing, and all the department heads for coming for us and telling us what their, their needs were and what their accomplishments were. It's a long process. They sit before us. They sit before advisory. They sit before other people, capital, and, and it works. And a quick clue is to the advisory committee for this great packet that's available to all the citizens out there. Gosh, it feels like a book now. It's got to be 50, 60 pages here of all the information that you would need to go to town meeting, educated to answer the questions. Only thing I did want to say, which Laura just touched on, is we did add a couple of positions here, a couple of allocations for communication to the public and for enforcement. And thank you for, for getting that into the budget. I think that those two things are going to help quite a bit. And, you know, our goal is to advance the town and advance the services to the residents, and I think those two things will help out quite a bit. So. That's my two cents. Jamie, I'll turn it over to you and see if any of your committee has, has questions or comments on the.
Well, I would just first like to say that the preparation of the advisory committee book is always a challenge for this committee. It's taken very seriously. There's lots of back and forth discussion, and then the articles are assigned to the individual strong member. I would say this year, because of the changing of the schedule, where we were starting earlier and the departments were responding earlier, gave us a greater amount of time to deliberate and create the quality booklet that you have before you this year. We can all remember what things were like 10 to 15 years ago. This is milestones ahead of everything. So I would like to thank, on behalf of the advisory committee, all the department heads, all the budget conscious, aware people in the government for making sure that the information was provided in a much greater, more timely manner this year, which allowed us to do our job. And I think it's going to make for a very comprehensive meeting, and people can make better decisions for the betterment of the town. So I thank everybody that's involved in this. I'll open up the committee. Does anybody have any questions about any aspect of the book, the budget? This is also a sign of good deliberation where we have beaten a dead horse to some extent. So I guess there's no further questions on our end.
Well, you've got four people that truly appreciate the work of the advisory committee. We're all on the advisory committee at different points and some overlapping. So thank you for the great work you guys do. It's really an asset to the town. But that being said, why don't we jump into some of the articles? This actually is a very small warrant. We've got eight articles on the special, and then we have only 17 on the annual town meeting. And I think there's probably, Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, like maybe nine on the consent agenda?
Probably 11.
Maybe 11, right? So over half of them are on the consent agenda because they really are kind of formalities and not really need to discuss. So I'm not going to go through all of those articles, but I would, I'd like anybody there, either raise your hand if you're zooming or in here, if there's something you want to talk about. I'll go, I'll kind of go through them in groups. And if we need to discuss anything, I know there's, there are a few things that we probably saw differently that we may want to discuss. But we can go through and discuss any of those. And Nancy's here to answer your questions also. So on this special town meeting, you know, a lot of consent stuff there, retiring debt, unpaid bills, some reconciliations, some CPC articles, easement, and then water was bylaw. And then the recreational vehicle parking that we talked about in a prior town meeting. So any of those topics that anyone wants to discuss between the, between the boards? No? Some of this is for timing. We want to get it in the special so that the money can be sent before the money's allocated in, in the annual. I know that's, that's part of the, the plan for some of the CPC stuff. I don't see any questions.
We're fine on our end.
Okay. Great. So now we'll go to the annual town meeting. Again, we're going through the first eight or so, or 10 actually, really are all customary articles. Compensation, capital plan, budget, enterprise funds, stabilization fund, and then the excess levy. Then we've got the revolving funds. I'll stop there because those are ones that we've done every year. Anybody have any questions on any of those to debate or discuss?
It's all straightforward.
Oh, yeah. I think we all agree that they were all pretty straightforward. CPC, article number 12. There's a number of, what are they on it, Karen?
13.
13. So there's 13 CPC items that we'll be discussing. Just going to that, that's on page 36. 36.
Jim, when you say 13, is that equivalent of the funding, the 10% funding and all of those, of this check?
Page 36, that's that. So the first four are, actually the first five are funding type stuff. And then there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight actual physical projects. Beachside, Cutaway House restoration, Pier 44, design and engineering, the train canopy, Purple Dinosaur Playground, Wheelchair Window Replacement, Jenkins Playground, and then Morty and Lincoln Parked Infrastructure. Anybody have any questions on that? I think there was, did you, this is kind of your, any, any questions to bring up? I know, was there, I think we agree on most of things. One article?
One article was where the advisory voting zero to eight against it was the recreation Pier 44, additional $300,000 for continued design study.
So I think that's probably the only issue on the whole night that we're going to kind of have some discussion on. So why don't we go into it a little bit, if you, if you want, Jamie? So why don't we go into it a little bit, if you want, Jamie?
Lynda, did you write the opinion in the book? Who wrote the opinion of the book?
I did, Jamie.
Okay, Elise, could you expound? Because you are the, even as much as today, there was back and forth between you and the coastal commission officer. So please, give us the bird's eye view, if you don't mind.
Sure.
This is Elise Russo, our vice chairman.
Hi, everybody. Hi.
Not chairman, or vice, vice chairman. First.
Yes, I think that the committee was concerned about the amount of money that was being requested in light of the fact that we didn't believe that there was adequate parking that would exist to draw a number of, you know, enough people to the site to make it worth, you know, spending a lot of money. So it was kind of a combination of did what was being proposed, have adequate parking to attract people, particularly when we were talking about things like 100 person capacity pavilion and activities like farmers markets and concerts and such. So recently, we were told at the CPC meeting actually, that there may be an alternate solution about parking. And so we have agreed that we will have the CPC come back to us at our meeting before the town meeting. And if the information is, you know, will be presented, and then we can determine whether or not we want to do a revote. That's kind of where it stands.
Great, so the main points of contention were the parking for the size of, or the event size that could possibly come there, and then the pavilion as well?
Well, I think, I think that the pavilion is, I think that the pavilion suggestion relates to provision of, you know, cover in the event that there are activities like events, like farmers markets, like concerts and such. And so we questioned whether or not, with only an acre of land here, and we do want to have grass and, you know, recreational space, was there even enough room on the site to get sufficient parking so that people would be able to come to those kinds of events? And I think that was, so when I say it's a circle of thought, I mean, please, believe me, we want to see green space there. We think it's a fabulous idea. You know, who wants to look at what we have there now, right? So we're very much looking forward to seeing a park there and enjoying those views, looking out over the harbor and all that. I think it was just a question of what are we really going to be spending here? And will people be able to use it? A lot of people, more people than can just walk.
Great, thank you.
Could I add to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah.
Couple more things that were brought up over the course of these deliberations. The study that was most recent and fresh in everybody's mind, where there was 1,200 plus engagement in that study. We felt that the study was too narrow focused. We felt that in each question of the study, each vision that was presented, which is a suggestive vision only, we understand that, all engaged and all held some type of a canopyed structure. There was no option for about, do you want to take it a step at a time? Or forgive me for maybe my informal usage of language, or perhaps we should just bring it to a green space with a view? Then everybody stand back, take a look at it again in a couple of years, when the town gets more used to that, gets understanding of that. That was part of why we felt there was this, and we know there's, we've been reminded, there's been a lot of dedicated people to this, and we're not trying to abridge upon their opinions either. We know there's a lot more in background that we didn't hear in the course of three or four presentations. But that was, part of it was just this concept that we're ending up spending almost $600,000 in design studies for something that may not work, and we'd rather see it done incrementally. And anybody in this committee, if you want to comment on that, if I missed something, please add into that further. I guess not, so now you.
Well, Jamie, well, Linda and Jerry.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
Took a call on one of them.
Sure, I'm going to go, did you want to speak as well?
I just wanted to point out that Jerry.
Okay. Lynda, we'll go with you first?
Lynda?
It won't let, oh, here we go, sorry, I've been trying to, I'm eating myself. I guess that the thing, and Elise said it, and so did Jamie, when this was presented to us, we were told that, you know, the expense, the high expense for this was, a lot of it was to do engineering and design study to see if you could build a pavilion. And all we're saying is, why spend the money to build something if you don't have the infrastructure to support it? And we have heard that there is some town-owned property or something down there, but we've also been told it butts wetlands. So I think until we're sure that we have a parking issue solved, why would you spend money to study something that you may not ever be able to build because you don't have the parking? So that was just the biggest thing. I mean, I think everybody wants a park there, nobody doesn't want to park there. But I mean, the harbor is, you know, parking's a problem in the harbor. And there's a big, you know, plan coming forward to build a park in the harbor. And that's going to take parking spots away. And so you can't say, well, let's build another park and use more parking spots in the harbor. So I think that the parking is an issue, you know, because you want to spend money to study something that we don't have the infrastructure to support. So that's, that's just my take.
Thank you. Jerry?
Hi, my name is Jerry Kelly, I live at 56 Moreland Road. First off, I would like to enthusiastically support the Pier 44 notion. Our entire committee is excited to do something with that. It's a crown jewel of situat. However, we're very concerned that if we were to build a structure there, it would become an attractive nuisance and a magnet for the towing companies that are going to be towing all the cars that illegally park. So we, we're enthusiastic about repurposing this property. We are very concerned about not being able to satisfy the demand that we'll create.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I had, I had something, I've got my hand up.
Please.
Right, right. I just, I just want to reiterate what I think Jamie said, maybe Elise said it as well, again, was the cost. It's quite a big cost, and we don't really have any idea, I mean, it's a bit scary to think what that might foretell about the size of the overall project. Because I really do feel like, you know, we ought to have some kind of, you know, idea of what we want to spend, what we think the community might want to spend, and, you know, make the most of the money we can have for, you know, one acre of land that we've already spent quite a lot of money on, right? In purchasing it, in the previous studies, and now another 400,000? That indicates a project that may be bigger than many people would want, you know, would want to support with our taxes, so. I guess it's just maybe, maybe more of a feeling on my part that we ought to size the, the, the study for this, you know, for the project we want in the end, you know, so we, you know, I don't know, want to spend 500,000 or a million or whatever, just raise the building, and what do we have to do to get it shovel ready? Just feel we're a bit out of proportion.
Thanks, Teresa. So clearly, you had eight knowledgeable and tellous people that all came back in zero to eight was the vote. So, you know, it's a different opinion, but you all agreed on it, so that's, that's great. Let me open it up to our board for just, Congress, Karen, do you want to start?
Yeah, if I may, I've attended many, many, many meetings as our chair, Shark Quilbar, who it says. We did our due diligence, hiring a firm to design, to help us design a park. Somebody recently said that, oh, it's just, it would be better if you had done it the way you did the tennis courts. Well, tennis courts, adding a tennis court, adding a tennis court is not as complicated as the site that we're presented with at Pier 44. We believe that we're doing all of the research we should do. We believe that we hired the right firm to help guide us through this. It is going to be a complicated project. There's no denying it. And I personally think, and I think what we've heard from people is, they want to know what our options are. And I think we owe it to the town to give the town the expert advice as to what our options might be, and whether or not we can move forward based on the site itself. It could turn out to be very difficult to permit. As a matter of fact, it probably will turn out to be difficult to permit. But to not consider all the options and not to give everyone the opportunity to weigh in, citizens, and you can get anyone to say, well, I didn't like this survey, I didn't like that survey, they're not easy to construct. But I do think that people feel as though they have been consulted all along the way. And one of the charges we gave to the experts, the design consultants, was communicate, 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 communicate. And so we've been, you know, I use the we because I've been with Paul along the way, to many, many, many committees and had many meetings to try to ferret out what it is that people want. The 400,000 that's been, that has been allocated to date for this, the phase one and phase two, which there seems to be some confusion over, that came from the NBTA mitigation funds that we still have. And there are very few things that we can spend that mitigation money on. So we thought it best to spend the money on getting to the point where we would have a final design to show to the town and to get the town to approve. And that's why the Shark Committee came to CPC to get funding to bring us to that final phase of pre-construction, the bid documents, the actual design, and then to be ready to go to town meeting. And even before that, to start exploring options for funding. I know our coastal resource officer has been very good at ferreting out funding already. And she's had meetings along with our consultants already to figure out where can we get grant money. And we've had some very good feedback from some of these state agencies about the fact that this is potentially a demonstration project to show what can be done. And the fact that we're tearing down a building and not replacing it with another building is a big A plus in most of these agencies' minds. As for the pavilion, I personally regret the fact that we use the word pavilion. Perhaps shade structure might not have been, sounded quite as important. We don't know if we can even put one on that site. But I think it would be wrong to not do the exploration. And to have gone as far as we've gone, and then simply suggest we tear down the building and throw some brass seat down, which I'm not sure we'd be allowed to do anyway, would not be a good use of the town's money. So I could just say to people, many, many, many committees, other than the advisory committee, whose opinion we value greatly, because we all know on this board how much money we spend on looking at things. Sometimes we don't agree, but I certainly think that we're not asking an unreasonable amount to bring this to conclusion so that we can go to town meeting with a request for funds if necessary and a final design. And this project has moved along much the way the library did. A lot of these projects, they take multiple years to do and multiple meetings. And you just have to keep going and hope that we reach the right conclusion. So that's why I think that maybe the chair would like to speak to this issue, but.
Okay, Paul, I'll give you a minute, a second. What?
Yes, thank you. I'm hearing a disconnect between feasibility and design phase. You know, I heard the advisory board speak quite a bit about putting additional funds into a feasibility study. And I don't think that's what this is, or else I must cast my vote as well. It was my understanding that we were moving into the design phase. It was my understanding also that these designs were not final and concrete. I also do not want a pavilion down there. I do not want this to be a $6 million project. I think you need a beautiful overlook, a park and parking. I know I had big fights about that with people, but it's our peak season and we need parking slots down there. No, no, no question. So, but I voted in favor of it. So I voted in favor of it because I trust the process, and I trust that Karen and Paul and the committee are listening to us that maybe the pavilion isn't what we want. And so it's my understanding that if we get these funds approved, that we get to the design phase with our consultants so they can design exactly something that answers those concerns that have been raised. So I voted in favor of it because I've not interpreted it as a feasibility study. We've already done that. So I just wanted to, I'm just hearing different things, so I feel like, I don't know, I wasn't at all a facilitator. People have interpreted it as differently.
Yeah, I guess relative to that, this is a fabulous problem that. Here's what I'm hearing, that this area might be so good, so we do want to use it, we don't have enough parking. First, as a community, we realize this is a great problem, this community, that we need to solve versus a lot of other communities. So one, just to take, if there's any tension out there, realize this is a fabulous one for us to start talking about. And I'm with you, I mean, Mike, I was really talking about this, I was talking about a splash pad and other things. And I've realized now that after not one, but two, but no, three different surveys that we've done, that's why some of those things were narrower, were more narrow, the direction has been luminously clear. And I always love that. Well, in the last 12 years, the first survey was 12 years ago. And kind of where, what we're talking about, this really was a feasibility stage that we're in, we're moving to that design. And I'm with you that I want to make sure that these issues of parking, everything can be worked out, but I know that they can't. I know it's not the final design, this is the next phase that we should have wanted to be moving forward on to make sure we can solve those problems, and I know that we can. And I would be heartbroken if it gets stopped now because of, not just the work, but because we're so close and this design firm is so fabulous, and as you say, we're trying to keep costs down. I mean, by looking at some of these aspects, you know, particularly, I don't want to overpromise to get state funds or the money, but the fact that we're thinking about that at the forefront is just fabulous. I love this conversation, I think it's fabulous. I want to thank the advisory board for this conversation, because I think it really helps us flush it out. I guess I would, I would just urge us to move forward so we can help solve this.
Karen, did you have any comments? Can you?
Yeah, just very quickly, and I want to echo what Mr. Goodrich said and commend, I have to say, the process for this particular project has been a real model for how we look at public projects. I think Shark should be hugely commended for going out there and asking, you know, people what they think, what they like, what they don't like, well ahead of the, you know, shovel in the ground. And I think it's a model for all of our projects going forward, because exactly this, this is the time we should be having these conversations. And I think advisory brought up a lot of things that we saw in the last survey that people had concerns about. Like Mrs. Curran said, you know, we voted, I personally voted in favor of it because we need to take it to the next step and to flush out those things out, and to have, continue to have the robust conversation about how do we make this the jewel that everyone, advisory and board included, knows this is going to be. So I think it'll be an interesting conversation at town meeting. I think Ms. Curran's point about, you know, we're not talking about feasibility, we're talking about actual design, and the fleshing out of, you know, I look at this as almost the fifth stage of where we are. And I'd really like it to go forward. So I look forward to the, I look forward to the conversation on the town meeting floor, and I hope folks come out and participate because the process, we should all be really proud of, because it's really exactly what we should be doing on a project of this size.
I just add, so we get five votes, and you guys get nine votes, and there's going to be 3, 4, 500 people at a town meeting that will decide where the project goes. What I just want to make sure that we both do is our job in explaining very well to the people what the project is and what the stage is, and, you know, we've got great designs. Personally, I like the pavilion, but people have to understand whether the pavilion is. But people have to understand whether the pavilion is part of it or if that's optional or not. You know, is this the design that we're gonna pick one of these three to move forward with? And Patrice brought up the cost, are we aware of the cost? You know, that, that's our job. Our job is to, we can vote whether we like pavilions or not like pavilions. But our job is to inform the three, four, five hundred people out there of what they're actually voting for in the most detail that we can. And I think if we do that, it's gonna work out. We all want something beautiful at that, at that spot. I think ultimately that's what we're gonna get. But, uh, we all just have to be very informed so that we can concisely tell the people what they're voting for. It's a lot of money and, uh, so they know what stage, what stage it's at. Um, before I go back to Patrice, I'm gonna.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me? You guys just froze on the video.
Yes, same. I don't have any sound.
Yeah, same here. Uh, let me look into that. Standby.
Push some more quarters in the machine.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you, Seth.
Back now? Great.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Board. Uh, thank you Advisory Committee. I'm Paul Barquitz. I am Chair of the Pier Forty-four Commission. We're trying to climb a mountain and I'm afraid we're tripping on a moulter. Parking's important, uh. And we'll, we'll solve the parking problem, but, you know, if the, if the C P C funding isn't approved, um, I don't know where this project goes. Um, you know, the next town meeting is, you know, months away and so, you know, what are we doing in the meantime? Uh, the, the advisory committee brought these latest concerns to the C P C last week. Karen and I attended. And C P C listened and, and they unanimously and, and strongly continued to support, uh, the funding. Uh, you know, the, the vote on, uh, the town meetings for the funding, it's not, it's not from pavilions or how much parking, that, that's all going to be resolved. You know, just on the pavilion, uh, you know, we're trying to build a park, not, not a pavilion. Uh, and we've had, um, at a town meeting, we've all have had more than sixty, six zero meetings. This, this is our fourth meeting with the advisory committee. Uh, but we've had lots of other meetings and, um, two public, uh, sessions, uh, on March seventh, one during the day and one at night. So we could hear more voices. We had the survey that you've mentioned. Uh, Cockley Wolf, the design consultant, was blown away by the survey participation. They expected two or three hundred and they had almost thirteen hundred. Uh, you know, the C P C, uh, again, is comfortable, very emphatically stated, very comfortable with the process. That you don't decide before you do all the investigations what, what the project's going to cost. Uh, we're following the process. It's been done many times on many other projects that C P C has funded. So there's, there's nothing rogue about, you know, what we're doing or the process. It's very mainstream. And, um, you know, part of it, my expectation is that a hundred percent of the cost will be through grant funding. It may be more C P C funding, but it'd be part of what we've been doing and, and your, your amazing staff, uh, Corey Miles, uh, looking at grant funding opportunities, initiating those discussions. And there's a lot of excitement, uh, for this project. There's excitement about the flood resilience, the green space, re- reducing, uh, pavement and impermeables. Uh, the water quality improvements that will come from this. So I'm, I'm encouraged by all the excitement I'm hearing, you know, from everybody about it and, and all the, the meetings we've had, all the excitement. So what I'm asking is we not trip on these moults. We don't, we, we don't wanna come up with a project, you know, in two years that everyone hates. We want a project that everyone loves. And so we'll address the parking. I can tell you, there's a lot of work going on by Jim, Karen, Corey Miles, looking at other po- parking alternatives. We realize that's a big issue, but you know, in all these conversations, uh, we've had a lot of people that said they want zero parking. They need three or four spaces. And then others have said, just make it a big parking lot. And, and then we've been told we need to provide overflow parking for the situat tavern. So there's a lot of different points of view, uh, on what should be done. But I would hope, you know, with the process we've had and the openness, our ability to go out and meet people and talk to people and, and listen, that to be a little more confident in, in what we're trying to do and that we're not gonna end up with something that people don't like or that doesn't meet their needs. You know, for the pavilion, um, we heard, we heard a lot of voices, uh, and this came through on the survey. One of the number one, uh, desires in terms of use is the farmer's market. So, uh, so we're trying to, okay, how, how can you accommodate that? Or we've heard, uh, you know, small, uh, daytime music events, um, art shows. You know, not everyone in our community can afford a fifty thousand dollar wedding. So we've heard this would be a, what a wonderful opportunity to have small weddings in an incredible view. It would feel like a million dollar wedding. And if you have a covering, then not only have the shade, but, uh, it makes it all, all weather. So you could have your farmer's market, you know, like the coacid farmer's market, the rains, they can't miss it. If you had a covering, you wouldn't have to do that. So our, our goal isn't to build a pavilion and, and maybe that's not feasible. And maybe whatever it costs, we can't afford. But, um, that's, that's, we, we're trying to address what we're hearing from the community, okay, things like that. Uh, another thing, I think, was a comment from Linda. I, I don't know where you heard this, Linda, but we never said it's a huge expense to do the, uh, geotechnical work, uh, for the pavilion or the whole site. And Corey Miles has said that'll cost twenty-six thousand dollars. Plus we have M A P C funds we, we could use for that. So it's, it's not a big cost. It's an important part of, you know, going forward. So just in summary, um, I think we've had a, a really good process. We, it's, it's really great, all the community interest. Uh, everyone wants us to be successful. Everyone wants us to be a jewel for Situit, uh, the gateway to the harbor. And so what we're asking, just let us finish our job with the funding from C P Cs. We can look at all the alternatives. There's, nothing's baked into this other than a park. Pavilion's not baked into it. No parking, lots of parking, middle parking is not baked into it. We're, we're gonna figure that out. And if we can develop some of these off-site places really close, uh, that'd be great.
Thanks, Paul. Um, and I see you guys, I'll, I'll get to you guys in one second. So this is great discussion. We're all, believe it or not, we all want the same thing, right? We all want a beautiful piece of the town renovated and made better. And, uh, I think all of the concerns are very valid. Um, you know, we're not trying to pinch each other here. What we wanna do though is we want everybody to understand where the stage is. We've seen, we've seen designs with pavilions, with certain layouts. We don't know if we're picking between one of those three. So I think that's just our job at town meeting to inform everybody that, hey, this money is just gonna take it to the next step, which may have this or may not have this or may, may do whatever. So, um, I'll open it up back to you guys for some comments. Let's try and not repeat ourselves and, and we even know that we're all on the same page as we want, uh, that part done and done properly. So, Patrice, I'll start with you. I think you reached it first.
Um, right. I just wanted to say that I agree with what you say. I think it would be really important to delineate exactly where we are in the stage, what's been done and how much has been spent so far and what is expected to be the outcomes of the next. Because I'm kinda getting lost in what's done already, what's gonna be done, but is different from what's already been done and how much, um, you know, what the overall cost is. And then my other question was, uh, and I don't even know if I need to ask it, but clarification about, um, whether there's gonna be any, um, possible, you know, potential costs for things that have already been suggested, you know, is the, is pavilion, A, you know, gonna cost a minimum of, I don't know, a million dollars or whatever? So that we all have some kind of, you know, a notion of what kind of money we're thinking about spending here. And as people have pointed out too, where the money might come from. Cause it might not come from citizens or might not come in great, you know, great amount from citizens. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, I think we can get all those answers. Um, Elise?
Hi, yes, thank you, Tony. I just want, so, so I just, just for clarity, we're spending three hundred and three thousand. We've, we've paid to the, we are paying to the consultant who is doing phase one and two for the feasibility. And then we're asking for another three hundred from C P C, plus we're getting another grand, four hundred. So seven hundred thousand dollars for pre-construction studies and surveys and work. Is that right? Is that the right number?
Well, I, I prefer to actually put that on paper and do what you're asking us to do. And that is to outline what has been done to date, what has been spent to date, what is anticipated to be spent if the C P C money comes through. And I will say in terms of C P C money, um, any money that is not spent goes back to C P C. And I know you all know that, but not everyone in the world knows that. So needless to say, between all of our town, uh, experts, employees and, and the, the Sharq Commission uh, and myself, I mean, I, I care about what we spend on things. So, uh, if, if we can keep the cost to a minimum, that's what we will do. We just feel as though it's important to have the money available to us should we run into some unexpected issues. And, um, that the issue of coming up with a budget number will really depend on the final design that we choose. There doesn't seem to be any point in getting cost estimates on things that we aren't gonna build. So, um, and, and if, and this is a, it's a timing issue, right? To try to figure out where you are at what point. So, Paul, anything?
Uh, Linda, I'll give you the final word.
Yeah, I, if somebody could just state that, Paul, we were told in advisory committee that the reason why this, it, it not excessive high amount of money was needed was because they had to do extra studies or extra feasibility things, whatever word you wanna use, to find out if the property could support a pavilion. And the advisory committee is simply stating, why spend extra money to find out if you can build something if you don't have the parking? And, and saying, well, there might be parking here, there might be parking there. No farmer's market vendor is going to wanna sell anything if there's no place for the customers to park. All we're trying to say is if you're gonna try and build a place for a fifty thousand dollar wedding, you need to have the parking. It's public parking. There's, there's businesses, everybody uses that. And to say, we, you know, you're gonna put a pavilion and, when you ask people what they want, they're gonna tell you they want the world. If you had said, hey, do you wanna see a splash pad there, half the people would say yes. You know, I mean, you can't, I think we need to just make sure that we're not spending money to find out if we can build something only to be told, but by the way, we don't have the parking. So if we don't have a good handle on where we're gonna park fifty or seventy-five cars, we shouldn't spend extra money to do a study, an engineering study, to see if we can build something. And that's all advisory's saying.
Great. I think, can we park at the inn and just walk out?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right. Paul, any?
Yeah, just as I said, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, if, if Linda misheard what was said at some of our presentations, but the, you know, the geotechnical work, which would include, uh, doing borings for, you know, if a pavilion could be supported, it's twenty-six thousand dollars. So it's, it's not a big part of this budget. And again, you know, we, we wanted, uh, originally, uh, based upon what we heard from the community, we were hoping to have at least a small building on that property for, uh, for, uh, you know, small events, uh, for the visitor center maybe. But, but then when we did the investigation and we found that you couldn't have any closed building in, in that zoning without being a ten-foot-high gear, it's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five feet of ramp. So we, we took that off. So that's, that's what the process is. Uh, again, I, I, this, um, this fixation on, I don't know, pavilion is, um, kinda puzzling to me. That's, you know, it's not a pavilion, it's a park.
Great. Amy, what was?
Yeah, just, I mean, just try to put some numbers to compare other feasibility studies. I believe the new elementary school, uh, just the feasibility was on, like, one million, uh, approved. So, uh, this, this is a few hundred dollars. How expensive is somebody's, uh, different studies?
Chip, I can share one thing real quick. I spoke in favor of what we called it, the advisory board, just to be, uh, completely open. I just wanna give you two quotes from the Patriot Ledger. Uh, "Situate officials are finally ready to decide what to do with the site of the former Pier Forty-four restaurant." Our Chair will grow. Quote, "It's been debated and talked about, encouraged by every option, one way or the other. We will digest what they've heard about with definitive use for it." And that was a quote from Chairman John Norton on September eighteenth, two thousand and twelve. So this has been sitting for quite a while. I think the board has the right position that we need to go and get it to a point where you can put it to the board and say, here's what we wanna do. Yes, I know what you wanna do.
Okay. Well, here's what I'm gonna say. This conversation's been very good because it's told us exactly what answers we need. Because four hundred people are gonna have these same questions in a couple, in a month. So we'll get all of that. We know what we need to do. We know what we need to have before people and we'll have the answers for them at town meeting. Um, Elise, I see you have your, your hand raised. I'll give you the, the last and final word.
Okay, thanks, Tony. I'll be quick. I just wanna say, I know we're saying, doesn't seem like a lot of money relative to the size of the project. And we don't know what the size of the project is. So seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money in my estimation if we're only gonna end up spending two or three million dollars on this thing. It's looking to me like it's gonna get to be a much bigger project and that's really where I'm worried about. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other C P C articles? I think we all, we all kind of in sync with that. Well, thank you very much for coming in here. And thank you for all the time you put into this. It'll get there. It won't get there quickly, but it will get there.
Don't be frustrated.
All right. So now, um, the rest of the articles, we stop at, um, C P C, C twelve reconciliations. We've got the VOTEC agreement, uh, for the amendment to include Marshfield into the, into their program. Any questions on that? And then chapter ninety-one, which is basically paperwork. Uh, and then we've got two zoning bylaws, common driveways and parking requirements. Any questions on any of those? All right. Um, final words from the board? I mean, no? Jamie, any final?
I wanna thank everybody for being respectful and civil. I think everybody has good vantage points here. Ultimately, it's our voters that decide what we end up doing. And I always have great faith in that a lot of times. So let's all just stay positive and we will get through this.
Yes.
And thank all of my committee for being here tonight.
Do you wanna adjourn your meeting first?
Um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Set it.
Second?
Set it.
Thank you, Jerry. Jesse, can you call?
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Sidell?
Aye.
Ms. Metro?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. McWiggin?
Aye.
Thank you all for, for coming. Any, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Army?
Set it.
Seconded by?
Sir.
Ms. Curran?
Sir.
And can we have a rule call vote also?
Ms. Camco?
Aye.
Ms. Carley?
Aye.
Mr. Van Noy?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. So thank you for videoing. Thank you in the back.